Hello and welcome to the Gettysburg Update. Today, I am joined by David Pedders, who is the co-owner of the Blue and Gray Bar and Grill in Gettysburg, a family-owned sports bar located at 2 Baltimore Street in Gettysburg Historic Square. He is running for Gettysburg Borough Council's seat Ward 1, which consists of addresses in the borough east of Baltimore and Carlos Street. He's running to fill Patricia Lawson's seat as she finishes out her second term expiring in December. He's running against Democrat Jeff Rio, the director of the Center for Public Service at Gettysburg College. Thank you so much for joining me, David.
Thank you for asking me here. I appreciate it.
Yep. My first question is, would you be able to introduce yourself to anybody listening who may not know who you are?
So, I'm David Pedders. I moved to Gettysburg from Lancaster County, Pennsylvania about eighteen years ago. I've worked a good part of my career in healthcare industry. I'm a registered pharmacist. I went to school at the University of Montana and moved back to Pennsylvania. And about six years ago, well, actually thirteen years ago, with my son and my wife, we started Blue and Gray Bar and Grill. And then three years ago, to correct you slightly, I'm no longer co-owner. My wife and myself turned it over to our son, who created a great environment for everyone in Gettysburg. So I've been working as an office manager there. I do things like payroll, purchasing. Tonight, I'll be managing, so if you're around town with your parents, come in, visit us. But I've been in public service a little bit. When I lived in Ephrata, Pennsylvania, I was on the school board for two years there, so I know the challenges of trying to meet the public expectations. I think my career in business and healthcare, small business, large business, will help me apply a lot of things I've learned over my somewhat lengthy career. I am actually seventy-two, so I have quite a few years of experience of life, and I look forward to serving everyone in Gettysburg, especially the students that come here and spend a great time here at Gettysburg College.
Absolutely. Thank you. And my next question going off of that is, why are you running for Borough Council?
That's a good question. So, for a couple of years, I've been attending the Borough Council meetings, and I find them interesting, but it's hard to see the full picture of the business of the borough. And the borough's a pretty big business. We have millions of visitors every year, not so many residents. We have a lot of challenges, and I thought, well, I have some time, I might as well try to apply some of my experiences and learn together with the council members, because there's no easy way to get anything done in an organization like the borough of Gettysburg. But I hope I can add to the decision-making.
Absolutely. My next question is about police oversight. The Gettysburg mayoral election has two very different candidates with two very different visions of police oversight in the borough, which will directly affect the Borough Council, which you're running for. So Chad Allen Carr is in favor of delegating some of the duties of the mayor in oversight of the police department to the Borough Council, while Rita Freeling is running to maintain control and oversight of the police department within the office of the mayor. So my next question is, would you support the transfer of police oversight to the mayor to the Borough Council, or do you think it's better served in just the mayor?
That's another great, complex question. My understanding, over history, it's been the ordinances of the state that typically control the police department is a mayoral office assignment. I would like to find out, I don't know the details, why the change is needed necessary. I would like to think maybe closer communication and cooperation between the mayor and council could achieve the same goals. But if the majority of the board, the Borough Council, decide this is the way to go, that they want to be involved with those discussions and decisions, I'm fine with that. It's just hard when you have seven members to maybe give the immediate and direct direction for the police versus one person who, in consultation with the Borough Council, can direct a workforce.
Thank you. And my second question on that train of thought, if oversight of the police department is transferred to the Borough Council, what would your general approach to oversight be sitting on the council?
Typically, the council's made up of different committees, and I would suspect they would form a committee of two or three members to help coordinate that interaction with the acting police chief, or hopefully soon a permanent police chief. So usually, that's boiled down to a smaller group of people, and there I would work with anyone involved.
Mm-hmm. And would you make a bachelor's degree required for police officers? It's been a topic of discussion in the Borough Council.
It has. I think there's a lot of benefits to do that. I'm not sure what the pool of availability is if you make that now the agreement to be a bachelor. So I think you have to be open, looking at a force experience that might override that concern.
Mm-hmm. And lastly, on the police, would you support mandating body cameras and de-escalation training for police officers?
Oh, absolutely. That protects everyone involved. Who wants to have a situation get out of control? Really, we're all human beings. We all have the same emotions. Sometimes those emotions get carried away, but then we need someone there to help us guide and de-escalate, so absolutely.
Awesome. My next question is about home rule. So home rule transfers the basic authority to act in municipal affairs from state law to local charter, drafted, adopted, and amended by municipal voters. Municipalities with home rule may exercise powers and functions not denied by the U.S. Constitution, PA Constitution, and state laws. Would you support a home rule referendum in Gettysburg, and what do you see as the potential benefits and drawbacks of home rule?
I can't say I have a great knowledgeable base on that. I would think it would have to be studied and presented to the residents as a referendum to vote and see what they think, but we would need public hearings that can clearly identify the plus and minus of each. You know, this system's been placed for a long time, so we have to be cautious to looking to new sort of format that might benefit or might cause more problems.
Mm-hmm. Yep. My next question is about housing. Housing has gotten more expensive in the borough in recent years. Do you believe Gettysburg needs more affordable housing? And if so, how should that be pursued?
I think there is a need for it. I don't think there's an easy solution, because there's not many tracts of land that are undeveloped to do the housing on, and the cost of construction and everything right now may actually create a worse housing cost situation. We see workers in our field are living on the outskirts or Hanover, where the rents and everything are more affordable, and they come into town. We have people coming from Maryland. I don't know, it's a very small borough. We have a lot of property that is owned by tax-exempt properties, and the borough can't really expand, so I'm not so sure there's room to develop that housing. Be a great idea, and I know there's a lot of organizations looking at that. I don't think that's something we had to create a solution to.
All right. And there's been a lot of discussion about the Gettysburg Station Project, a lot of opposition for it, you know, due to its moving away from Gettysburg's historic character and architecture, and also, as to the previous point, lack of affordable housing there. So I just want to generally ask, how do you balance preserving the town's historic character with the need for business growth and additional housing development that's happening?
Yes, so that development has been going on for, boy, I don't even know how many years. I think since we've lived in Gettysburg, that lot has been empty, kind of blight on the area, and it is right in downtown Gettysburg, so it's nice that there's something that's going to be there. And my understanding, that was the only developer that came up with a plan. A lot of the planning and zoning things are not done by the borough. Absolutely, they want the borough to buy into the plan. The borough also finds itself in a horrible situation with the tax income from property, so that was one relief they were hoping to get funding for. It certainly can't be any larger than the hotel, so, you know, hopefully it won't look too out of place. I've seen some of the architectural drawings. Depending on the angle of the view, it's not horrible, so it's kind of a trade-off. But yeah, I like historic Gettysburg and all we can do to preserve it.
Absolutely. And my next question is just a more general one about housing. What would you describe your approach to housing issues in the borough, and what do you see as the biggest housing issues in the borough?
I think it's affordability, absolutely. The properties that have been owned for many, many years by the same landlords, they seem to have more affordable rents for the people. But if you buy real estate now and try to turn it into a rentable property, it's going to be expensive. I really like the concept that we did years ago, when we remodeled Blue and Gray, maybe eight years ago. We remodeled the upstairs of Blue and Gray, and my wife and myself and our dog, we live up there. And I like to see small businesses do that kind of European model and older American model, where you had a business in town, and you believed in your town, and you lived above your business.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Next, just more generally, what do you see as some of the biggest issues facing Gettysburg Borough today?
We mentioned policing earlier. We do only have an acting police chief. It is a large part of the borough's budget to pay for the manpower for police. We have big issues with, I think I heard forty percent of the real estate property in the borough is non-taxable because they're tax-exempt. Somehow, we need to work together with some of those organizations to try to do more in lieu of payments. We all use similar services in borough, and property owners, or the renters in reality also, should not be the only ones paying for all those services. We have some real challenges because of the age of the borough. A lot of the infrastructure, I don't know if you were in town maybe three years ago, we actually had water coming out of Baltimore Street, right in the middle of the street. And for a week or two before that, we were getting water in our basement at Blue and Gray, and it was because a ten-inch water main had eroded. The basic water, gas, and sewer lines all need gradual replacement. So expensive to do that, so the infrastructure is really important. We also need to think about, what is Gettysburg going to look like? Because the historic drawl that so many of us hold dear may not be as much interest in the future generations, or how do we preserve that? And there's organizations, Main Street Gettysburg, Destination Gettysburg, look at that to see what we can do to keep tourists active in there. And we also want to have great partnership with Gettysburg College. They represent a really thriving aspect to the town. They bring so many arts, they bring students from all over the world, and we get different ideas and cultures coming together and enjoying each other's company, hopefully.
Next, I want to ask about the current Borough Council. Are there any recent decisions by the Borough Council that stand out to you as a point of clear disagreement, and then next I'm going to ask agreement?
I'm a little concerned about the public demonstrations in the center of the square. Now, listen before you get crazy on this. It's, to me, it's a safety issue. Gettysburg and everything that happened to Gettysburg is due to combinations of roads which come through the center of town. We're a very active highway situation, and I just worry with the demonstrations that people holding signs and waving at are going to distract some driver enough that someone's going to get hurt. And is that not only bad for the person getting hurt and the driver, but it creates a huge liability issue for the borough. The borough can request the demonstrations be held at another location that might be safer for everyone. So that's something I don't agree with the council. Obviously, they've made up their mind which way to go. The other thing is future development of Main Street. Gettysburg wants to come down Baltimore Street and remodel everything and do infrastructure, which is good, but right now, a plan that they want to approve suddenly this last year, they want to remove all the parking on the circle in Gettysburg. And yes, that's going to hurt our business, that's going to hurt all the merchants in that first block of the circle. And I really want them to think long and hard about that, and really talk more to the merchants, see if that's the best decisions. Those are probably some of the things that I disagree the most with. Maybe another one, so they make decisions, and you go there and listen to them, and you really don't know too much background, how that decision is made. I would love to see they can post the agenda, and the minutes of meetings, can they post the departmental information that is given to them before the meetings to help them make the decision, so we as taxpayers can understand more what goes into that decision. So the coin of the day is transparency. What can we do using technology that's there to give greater transparency to everyone involved in their decisions? I think that should be pretty easy to do, and I would love to see, I'd love to see a little bit more working with parking. Parking is a huge expense. If you park off-campus and park in some of the streets, it's very expensive. I'd like to see if, like, in January, March, February, maybe have no parking fee. That's when we can get people that normally live outside of Gettysburg but wish to enjoy it or shop downtown to at least come into town. They may not come during the busy tour season, but if we had free parking, that might be enough to attract them. Plus, it would help attract different visitors, groups, or conventions into the hotel, too. So this is just some crazy ideas I have. Eh, they might work, they might not, but if we don't try, we'll never know.
Mm-hmm. I just want to go off that parking point. Like, are there any other, like, policy ideas for parking that you would like to see changed? Like, what would your approach to parking be? I see that you're passionate about that.
Yes. I don't think the parking has to go till eight o'clock at night, because that really discourages people coming back after the workday into town. A lot of towns stop at six o'clock or five o'clock. Hanover does that. A lot of the large tourist towns around beach areas, they don't do winter parking fees to attract people. I think years ago, they did a survey of another parking garage. I call it the JP Building. It's off Middle Street. It was an old magistrate office, and then they kind of condemned it because of asbestos. It's just sitting there, and there's some parking, street parking, but they could raise all that and buy that property, I think the county owns it right now, trade that off, and maybe build another parking structure. And we could do a better job advertising where our parking garage is. A lot of people don't know it's there, or how to access it, where some of the other parking area is off Middle Street, so better signage for some of the parking. And who likes the parking app? I always hear the visitors just really struggle with that, but they also struggle not having enough quarters.
Okay.
I think a quarter downtown buys six minutes. It's crazy.
Mm-hmm. Yep. So next, going off of the previous, previous question, so we talked about points of disagreement with the Borough Council. Is there anything that you agreed with, that you're like, that was a great decision, I agree with that?
They're really working hard to update a lot of their different ordinances and zoning things, and that all has to be done. The typical routine business, whether it's maintenance and how they do that, being more ADA compliant by increasing the number of curb cutouts and redoing those, so people with handicaps have fair access to everything. They've done a good job with that. They've done a good job working with Main Street Gettysburg during the Christmas Festival. They work the Halloween parade. They're working with a Masonic group that I'm part of to do New Year's Eve and help do that. So absolutely, they do a lot of good, but if we just talk about all the good they do, then it's like, well, why are you running? And what do you want to do to help make our town better, if possible?
Yeah. Next, I want to ask, how would you balance your work with the Blue and Gray Bar and Grill with your work on Borough Council? I know you said that you're no longer the co-owner, but how would you handle that trade-off and that balance?
A lot of the council business is done electronically. They all, I don't know if you've ever gone to a meeting, but they all have laptops, and they get the information on their laptops. I'm a block and a half away from the borough office. I walk there often evenings. There's a lot of time. Yeah. I mean, I've worked all my life, many times doing two jobs at the same time. We have two wonderful sons that went to college, and during those years, I worked two jobs to pay for that. So it's just time management. It's one of the easier things.
Got it. So Gettysburg College is a big part of the town's life and culture. How do you see the borough's relationship with the college and its students?
It appears to me that it's really good and strong, and I think each other values each other's ideas and problems, and I look forward to having a strong relationship continue on. I'm not sure there's a point person that the college communicates on a regular basis with the council. Hopefully, there is, but I'm not aware of someone. But I think the town is better off with having a college and having good connections, and certainly, the college is well off to have Gettysburg Borough being a good partner in their mission, too.
Mm-hmm. And next, what do you see as the proper role of local government in people's lives here in Gettysburg?
So, the simple part is, yes, we need to provide all the services that the people of the town need, and we need to do it at an affordable price that you can live in your home, you can retire, and you don't have to move because you can't pay your property taxes. Property taxes always been a problem in the state of Pennsylvania. Ever since I remember growing up as a child, it was always going to change how they were going to do that, but they really never have. I think Gettysburg Borough really tries hard and will continue to find ways to offer more to the residents than just the simple services they need to live. They need to also grow with entertainment, with hospitality, with cordiality, with just being good humans. And I think that's something the borough tries to do by endorsing all these different other projects, whether parades or festivals. You know, hopefully, we can do a music festival sometime. I'd love to see something in the spring to get people excited about the year coming up.
Yep. And what is one thing you hope to achieve during your potential term on Borough Council?
I hope to be able to clearly state my opinion and back it with facts, so the other members that make a decision can understand my point of view and perhaps take that into consideration and change some of their decisions. If we can't communicate clearly with the data and supporting issues, then there's no hope. We can't use emotions to control ourselves. And I think the council is very data-driven, but some issues get very emotional. And I get it, when you have residents calling you and they're really upset about something, you need to de-escalate and make the wise choice for everyone.
Mm-hmm. And where do you see Gettysburg five or ten years from now, and how do we get there?
Okay, I wish I had a crystal ball five or ten years from now. I don't think anything's going to change real fast in Gettysburg for at least five years. I'm not even sure that that large construction project will start within five years. Certainly, the Baltimore construction, which would be really disruptive to normal life in Gettysburg, tearing up most of Baltimore Street, that's not going to happen in ten years. So I think we'll see a lot continuing as it is. Hopefully, as the economy settles down and people feel more secure, we'll see more small businesses trying their approach in town, because that's really what towns are about. It draws people into town and adds a lot to everything. Small businesses actually make up sixty-eight percent of the business world. Hard to believe, sixty-eight percent, small business. Not hundreds of people, but small businesses. We're kind of a medium small business. We have about fifty employees. Some of them are Gettysburg College students, and we value them, and they bring a lot of fun things to it. We kid, one of our company mottos is, "Come to work, number one. Don't come to work, it's no good. Try not to suck." Some days, we'll all suck, but our teammates may not. And that's the same way with Gettysburg. You know, there'll be ups and downs in the Gettysburg town itself, but overall, everybody wants Gettysburg to be unique, to be thriving, to have tourism, to have education, to have arts, sciences, opportunities for business, and yet be affordable to live there. We all want that. It's human nature.
Mm-hmm. And my last question, just, I want to give you opportunity to say anything that you, you know, might not have said before that you want to get out there. My last question, why should people vote for you?
I think the biggest reason maybe is that I represent a little bit different viewpoint of the current makeup of the council and even the candidate running against me. I had that business background. I started out as a pharmacist, retail pharmacy. Then I went into institutional, small hospitals. I worked in the VA medical system. I've set up multiple pharmacies, retail and institutional. I've set up multiple cancer center pharmacies. In my last few years in Gettysburg, I specialized IV therapy and cancer therapy medications. On the other hand, during all that, I had the opportunity to work with my father in a tool-dye business, which was very advanced for ten years. So I got to see manufacturing and very precision, where we worked down to ten thousandths of an inch to make sixty-four bottle caps every thirteen seconds around the clock. We've, he helped create tamper-evident closures after McNeil Tylenol poisoning with cyanide. So I got to see that business, went back into hospitals, moved here. My son graduated from Virginia Wesleyan College down Virginia Beach, and after working in hospitality industry down there, visited Gettysburg one time and said, "We read 'The Greatest Place Ever,'" and it was the Plaza on the square years ago before Blue and Gray. He said, "Someday, I'm going to own it." My wife looked at him and said, "Yeah, right. That's never going to happen." And three years after that, we worked a deal, and we provide a lot of entertainment, a lot of employment opportunities. We've saved a lot of employee lives, I'm pretty sure, and guided them to some good life choices, and we have great food. What does that have to do with public service? I think all those life experiences, you get to see so many people, so many ideas, scientific backgrounds. background, you're data-driven to make decisions, but you also see the humanity. Some of the saddest moments, when I would see some of my friends that I knew in the community go to the cancer center, not here in Gettysburg, but another location, and be fighting for their lives with cancer. And I would actually sit and hold their hand while the med I mixed up went in their veins and pray for them. That's the humanity we need and everything. So overall, life experiences, scientific background, business background, no one else on the council has a business background that I'm aware of, certainly not in a retail sort of environment or a for-profit type environment. And the Borough's a big business, has all the same problems as a same business, except they get to revenue from taxes, and they can hold the sword to raise taxes or not. So got to spend wisely. Did I ramble on a lot there?
I mean, that's good. That's what I want. I want you to be, you know, telling everything that you have to say. I appreciate it. Thank you so much for joining me, David Peters. David Peters is the Republican nominee for Ward One of Gettysburg Borough Council. The deadline to register to vote in Pennsylvania has passed. It was October 20th, but go out and vote November 4th in the Gettysburg election. Thank you for joining me, David Peters.
You're welcome. I think it's over at the firehouse is the voting location for the students. Go Bullets!
Go Bullets!
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, next up, we have, I have some more op-eds that have been written about the Gettysburg mayoral election. We have, for both candidates, we have one for Gettysburg Mayor Rita Freeling, which while I read first, and then more for Chad Allen Carr. So first, Gettysburg Mayor Rita Freeling is a Democrat running for reelection in November on the Republican ticket and reaching out across all parties, including independents, with letters touting her accomplishments and qualifications. This bit of atypical electioneering is the result of a primary campaign that saw Freeling lose the Democratic vote to Chad Allen Carr, 308 to 266, but earned the Republican primary slot with 119 write-in votes. The write-in route also put Democrat Lisa Angstadt on the November ballot as both a Republican and Democrat in the race for Gettysburg's tax collector. She received 22 Republican write-ins to go along with 481 more traditional Democrat votes, according to Adams County 2025 primary results. The practice of cross-filling appearing on both parties' ballots in the same election put Paul Royer, candidate for judge of the Court of Common Pleas, in a situation like Freeling. Royer, a Republican, lost to Representative Torrin Ecker, Republican 193, in this year's Republican primary, but won as the only candidate on the Democratic primary after cross-filling, according to primary results. For the campaign, Royer set himself the task of appearing at all Adams County Borough and Township meetings, he said. For Freeling, running as a Republican has broadened her message compared with 2021. In the letters to Gettysburg voters, it appears Freeling targets her message to Democrats or Republicans and notes accomplishments in, number one, public safety and accountability, quote, "As part of my duties enshrined in state code, I've worked closely with law enforcement to ensure accountability, effective oversight, and public trust. There have been no legal battles with our police department under my watch," end quote. Number two, community partnerships, quote, "Strengthening ties with Gettysburg College students, engaging with local leaders, and sharing best practices through my role on the Pennsylvania Municipal League Board," end quote. Number three, fortifying legislative relationships, quote, "Building connections at the county, state, and federal levels to ensure Gettysburg's voice is heard when it matters most," end quote. Unlike Chad Allen Carr, her opponent in the mayoral race, Freeling would not relinquish oversight of the police department to Borough Council, she said. She also opposes raising property taxes, tax rates, and changing the zoning ordinance to accommodate construction of more tall buildings like Gettysburg Station, Freeling said. She did not have the party's support when she won the Democratic primary over Carr in 2021, she said. So not having its support this year while running as a Republican is not that big a change. Finally, Freeling writes of a clear choice in the upcoming election. Continue with leadership focused on stability, accountability, and practical solutions, or risk division and inexperience. She claims, quote, "I'm not interested in partisanship. I'm focused on serving all residents of Gettysburg and working to keep our town moving forward, no matter your political affiliation," end quote. Save Historic Gettysburg, S.H.G., has seen one vision of the future and doesn't like the view. Running the Gettysburg Times today are the first four of eight renditions of the downtown if proposed rezoning is approved by the Borough. The area to be rezoned revitalization would allow for 72-foot tall buildings, including the current footprint for the station project. Renditions were originally completed for the National Park Service by Ryan Schuler Design LLC. The rendition appears on Page A7 and A8. Future renditions are scheduled for publication in the Times on October 20th, 23rd, 24th, and 27th. Margaret Rock, president of Save Historic Gettysburg, Inc., said, quote, "We urge residents to come to the meeting so people become aware of the fact that our Borough Government is encouraging tall buildings in the downtown. We need to speak out against what we see as a very harmful proposal." S.H.G. is using a series of ads to notify and encourage Gettysburg Borough residents to attend the council hearing scheduled for 6:00 PM on October 27th. In sharing the methodology of creating the renderings, Ryan Schuler Design outlined the area to be rezoned and allowed seven-story buildings. The renderings claim to provide the sightline and visual impact from well-known David Will's House, a National Park Service site. The new area to be rezoned, R.E.V., primarily centered on West railroad street bordered by West Racehorse Alley on the south, North Washington Street on the west, follows DeLapp Avenue, Coon Alley, and Gilliland Alley. There are two added properties on Carlisle Street. Rock said, quote, "Please don't misunderstand. We fully support revitalizing the historic district and agree that some areas are in real need of improvement and new development. However, any new construction should complement the character of the distinct, of the distinct district and remain no taller than four stories. In addition, significant attention must be given to addressing the traffic flow in and around Lincoln Square." The methodology also notes that the renderings are for illustrative purposes and designed to show the scale, proximity, and volume of proposed buildings. Should all available real estate be populated with seven-floor buildings? It is noted that the renderings are not an accurate representation of the final architectural design, material, landscaping, or supporting infrastructure. Finally, the methodology notes the renderings are representative of what the human eye would see if you rezoned area were entirely populated by seven-floor buildings. A source from Save Historic Gettysburg noted that many of the renderings presented a worst-case scenario in the aftermath of rezoning. The source said, "While a total buildout of seven-story buildings in the footprint is unlikely, if the Borough approves the rezoning, the potential for such an impact is possible." The source said, "We're not opposed to development. We're just against anything that hurts the historic ambiance of Gettysburg." So the next op-ed is from the Gettysburg Times and is titled Vote Carr. Though I relocated to Littlestown in 2017, my relationship extended throughout Adams County. I've met remarkable people whose warmth, resilience, and vision affirm that moving here was one of my greatest gifts. Chad Allen Carr, a name many know as the founding executive slash artistic director of Gettysburg Community Theater, and as a Borough Council member, is one of those people. Yet beyond his titles, it is Chad's decision to run for mayor that I believe could become his most meaningful contribution to Gettysburg as a true servant leader. I write this with deep gratitude for my husband, Bob Rogers, who brought me to Adams County. Born in Richmond, Virginia, during segregation, I carry vivid memories of what it means to live in a divided world. Those experiences sharpen my appreciation for leaders who build bridges, not walls. Gettysburg, with its history as both a site of conflict and a symbol of reconciliation, deserves a leader who embraces unity. This is why I believe Chad Allen Carr is uniquely prepared to honor the town's past while guiding its future. Chad, at his core, a bridge builder, listens deeply, leads boldly, and works tirelessly to bring people together across differences towards a shared vibrant future. His leadership has always been about service, not self. Chad lives out this ethic, giving to give, not to get. As mayor, he pledges to expand on his Borough Council work by securing funding, cultivating partnerships, and sparking new energy for economic growth. He understands that inclusive growth is not optional, it is essential. Like other municipalities, Gettysburg's vitality depends on an economic engine to fuel opportunities. Chad recognizes that people power the engine across every sector, from destination Gettysburg members with unique and vibrant businesses to Gettysburg Garden Club members who beautify the town square for locals and tourists. Each segment of the population contributes to the whole. Chad values that interconnectedness. He knows that whether the issue is affordable housing, workforce development, or business vitality, progress requires everyone at the table. That is why his platform resonates. It is not only about policies, it is about values. Chad's commitment to inclusivity ensures that all voices matter. His vision is rooted in the belief that Gettysburg's future should be built by and for the community as a whole. Though my husband and I cherish the serenity of our Stone of Scone Farm, Gettysburg often feels like a second home. Perhaps it is the people, the museums, the cultural events, the battlefield, the fine dining, the wineries and breweries, and the famous ice cream. More likely, it is all of the above and more. Yet I'm certain of this. If Chad Allen Carr is elected mayor, there will be many more reasons for residents and visitors to celebrate this extraordinary town. Gettysburg deserves a leader embodies unity, vision, and possibility. That leader is Chad Allen Carr. That was written by Patricia Green from Littlestown. And now we have another, we have another opinion piece on the other side supporting Freeling called Supports Freeling by Tom Wistock, I believe, in the Gettysburg Times. So I'll read that as well. I'm here to tell you that I totally support Rita Freeling to be re-elected mayor of Gettysburg next month. I was Rita's friend in high school. Me and my wife graduated with her. Rita is such a great person and really cares about her job as mayor of Gettysburg, Pennsylvania. She is well-qualified for the job and will work very hard for us while in office. I am asking everyone to please get out and vote. Normally, when it's not a presidential election, not many people vote. My dad always told me, if I don't vote, then I don't have the right to complain about anything. So please keep Rita in office and let her continue to do such a great job like she has been doing. So when you go to the polls, please vote for Rita Freeling to keep on doing a great job like she has been doing. Thank you, everyone who will stand by Rita Freeling. Once again, respectfully yours, Tom Wistock from Gettysburg. So those were some op-eds for both candidates. Now, we're going to move on to talk about the Gettysburg town budget in one second. Gettysburg's projected budget deficit for 2026 has dropped from 415,000 to 370,000. The preliminary budget proposal still includes funding for livestream coverage of planning commission and historical architectural review board meetings, Charles Gable, Borough Manager, set at a council budget work session Monday. The deficit anticipated at the start of the council's budget work initially pegged at 415,000. We came out of the box with last week at a business meeting, October 14th, fell to 370,000 for two reasons, Gable said. First, the Borough's initial insurance premium increased of 24.9%. Turned out to be at 20%, he said. Second, a plan to put the Borough's part-time custodian on full-time schedule was reworked after a request from Councilmember Patricia Lawson from Ward One to consider outsourcing custodial services with a switch to two part-time positions, he said. The change to part timers would eliminate the cost of all the employee payroll taxes and benefits, Gable said. The increased need for custodial services stems from upcoming construction of Borough's Gettysburg Welcome Center at 340 Baltimore Street, he said. Gable's announcement of proposed livestreams, livestream planning commission and H.A.R.B., Historical Architectural Review Board, coverage came shortly after Gettysburg resident Sue Chipperly, during the public comment period, renewed her request for Borough funding of commission meetings. Planning commission meetings have been livestreamed by community media of South Central Pennsylvania since May 2024 through a private organization, Save Historic Gettysburg, Chipperly said. The group's cost of planning commission broadcasts, along with at least one H.A.R.B. meeting, was 3,460 for the year from May 20th, 2024 to May 23rd, 2025, she said. For comparison, the Borough's expected broadcasting costs in 2026 are 3,240 for 12 business meetings, 2,970 for 11 standard work sessions, and 1,350 for budget work sessions, Council President Matt Moon said. Members did not vote on possible funding for planning commission and H.A.R.B. meetings, but consensus favored the additional coverage. During the commission's review of the proposed zoning ordinance revision, quote, "I was able to watch the planning meetings. I don't think I would have been as thorough in my understanding of that process without coverage funded by public donations," said Member Chris Berger. After trying and failing to remotely watch a recent Historical Architectural Review Board meeting, quote, "I would be open for that discussion, too. They have controversial, they have been controversial somewhat over the past few years," unquote, he said. Member Alicia Sanders agreed, quote, "I think it's important for transparency," she said. "We can't always make the planning commission meetings or the Historical Architectural Review Board meetings." Those views were echoed by other members, including Chad Allen Carr, who also brought up the possibility of raising taxes to fund such a live streaming. "Those of you do not agree that this should be in the budget. We need to hear from you," he said. Council's next budget work session is scheduled for Monday, October 27th at 7:00 PM in the municipal building's Troxel Council Chambers, 59 East High Street, following a public zoning hearing at 6:00 PM. I'm going to go through some local community events now. So in Adams County, Adams County's Day of Giving, the Giving Spree, is Thursday, November 6th from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. At the Wyndham Gettysburg, donors can learn about and support more than 100 nonprofits in person, by mail or online. Details at ACCFGivingSpree.org or 717-337-0060. International Gift Festival and Rug Event, YMCA Gettysburg, 909 Fairfield Road, is Wednesday, November 5th to 8th, Wednesday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and Saturday, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Fair trade goods, handcrafted gifts, home goods, Christmas ornaments, teas, and coffee. Hand-knotted artisan-designed rugs in many sizes and colors. Saves, 5865 Hanover Road, Basket Bingo is Friday, November 21st. Doors open at 4:30 PM. Hot meal at 5:30 PM. Bingo starts at 6:30 PM. $20 per ticket, including meal. Retired Longa Burger Baskets, filled by local businesses and individuals, family event, plus special raffles. Reserve your tickets. Our tickets will also be available at the door. Call 717-353-3682. Adams County Church Women United will meet Wednesday, November 5th at 11:30 AM at Gettysburg Church of the Brethren, 1710 Biglerville Road. Following the luncheon, we will celebrate World Community Day. Bring a bag lunch, dessert, and beverages will be provided. Invite a friend, no reservation needed. Adams and York County Veterans Organizations are sponsoring a free bus trip for a veteran and guest Thursday, November 6th to the United States Naval Academy in Annapolis, Maryland. Adams County and Hanover Area Veterans will meet at the Hanover Elks, 47 North Forney Avenue, Hanover, Pennsylvania at 7:00 AM. Advanced registration is required. Registration forms can be attained at any Adams County or Hanover Area Veterans Club or by contacting Bob Miller at 717-676-6180, or email RWMILLERCPA@hotmail.com. The deadline for registration is October 24th. Ooh, that's past, right? PEO Chapter BL of Gettysburg will meet for a holiday card-making party, silent auction, and craft fair November 5th, 3:30 to 7:00 PM at Lake Heritage Community Center, 1,000 Lake Heritage Drive. Reservations required by October 27th. For more information, email GettysburgChapterPO@gmail.com or call 717-398-2740. Gettysburg Four Square Church's annual Fall Fest is Thursday, October 31st from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. In the church parking lot, there is a free, family-friendly event, which will feature trunk-or-treat, food trucks, and inflatable corn maze, music, and free food for all attendees. Families are invited to come in, costume, enjoy local eats, and experience a night of laughter, connection, and community celebration. Trinity UCC at High and Stratton Streets is hosting a trunk-or-treat Friday, October 31st from 6:00 to 7:30 PM from the parking lot on the High Street side of the church. Gettysburg Church of Brethren Fall Festival Gettysburg Church of Brethren Fall Festival is Saturday, October twenty-fifth, five P M. At seventeen ten Biglerville Road, there will be a chili cook-off, food, crafts, games, and trunk-or-treat. Bring your favorite chili if you'd like to enter a cook-off or share a dessert if you'd prefer. The Women's Club of Gettysburg meets every second Wednesday of the month, October through May, at Haas's Steak and Seafood House, eleven forty York Road at eleven thirty A M. The next meeting is Wednesday, November twelfth. New members welcome. Gettysburg Walking Club will meet at the Gettysburg Museum and Visitor Center, located off of Route ninety-seven, to walk in the area Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, at ten A M., with lunch afterwards at eleven A M. Perkins, everyone is welcome. For more information, call seven one seven five two eight seven six four six. And some Gettysburg College news. So Mr. Alpha O. will take place on ten thirty-one from six P M. to eight P M. in Plank Gym. And Bergburst will take place on eleven twenty-five. They have emailed the cultural clubs asking if they would like a food table. Have some more events coming up at the college. Today, from four P M. to nine P M., you have the X-Sig Poster Exhibit in the Science Center two lobby, Science Center one lobby and Science Center three lobby. You have Catholic Mass for Family Weekend today from five P M. to six P M. You have Family Weekend CCM Dinner in the Chapel Seven Lounge from six P M. to eight P M. You have Mr. Alpha O. potential date Saturday from six P M. to nine P M. You have Senior Recital, Ella Reedway, a soprano, in the Sunderman Conservatory in Schmucker Hall, two-two-two Recital Hall, from seven P M. to eight P M. Senior recital today. You have Star Wars Trivia in the College Union Junction from seven P M. to eight P M. Today, you have Gettysburg Bingo from eight P M. to ten P M. at the West Building Attic. You have Paint, Sip, and Relax from eight P M. to ten P M. at the Plank Gym Bar and Grill. Plank Gym Beer Garden, rather, apologies, from eight P M. to ten P M. Plank Basement Open from Saturday, October twenty-fifth, eight P M. to Sunday, October twenty-sixth, one thirty A M. The Plank Gym Bar is open. PDT is open today from ten P M. to two A M. Phi Delta Theta. You have SAE Open Saturday, October twenty-fifth, from ten P M. to Sunday, October twenty-sixth, two A M. Sigma Alpha Epsilon. You have AXP Open Saturday, October twenty-fifth, from eleven P M. to Sunday, October twenty-sixth, at two A M. Appleford Carriage House. Tomorrow, you have the G A B S L Banquet, Sunday, October twenty-sixth, from ten A M. to twelve P M. at the Dining Hall Atrium. You have SAI Epsilon Beta Chapter Meeting, Sunday, October twenty-sixth, ten thirty A M. to eleven thirty A M. in Schmucker Hall two fifteen. You have the Gettysburg Quaker Meeting from ten thirty A M. to twelve P M. in Glatfield Lodge tomorrow. You have Family Weekend Chapel Services from eleven A M. to twelve P M. tomorrow. And you have Gettysburg Thrifts with Waldo's Pop-Up at Waldo's from eleven A M. to two P M. Have the SAE Bake Sale, the College Union Bullet Hole, from eleven A M. to two P M. You have Painted Turtle Farm Volunteer Shift from two P M. to four P M. on Sunday. Casa de la Cultura, Sunday Swim F twenty-five, tomorrow from three P M. to four thirty. The Jaeger Center for Athletics. You have Open Swim tomorrow from three P M. to seven P M. at the Jaeger Center, I believe. You have Clarinets and Costumes tomorrow, three thirty to four thirty P M. at Schmucker Hall, two-two-two Recital Hall. You have Resistance Workout with Jillian, four P M. to five P M. at the Jaeger Center, one forty-three multipurpose room. You have X-Sig Poster Exhibit, again, in the Science Center Lobbies, from four P M. to nine P M. You have Catholic Mass Sunday at five P M. to six P M. at Christ Chapel, five P M. to six P M. You have the French Film Festival at the Majestic Theater, Cinema One, from five P M. to seven P M. And you have, you have the Half Soul Rehearsal, Sunday, six P M. to seven P M. You have the CCM Dinner After Mass from six P M. to seven thirty P M. Pickup Volleyball, six P M. to eight P M. tomorrow. You have Climbing Club Practice, seven P M. to nine P M. You have Fencing Meeting, seven P M. to nine P M. Monday, you have G S P C Meeting, Monday, ten A M. to eleven A M. You have Open Swim from ten A M. to one P M. on Monday, the Jaeger Center. You have Mr. Alpha O., as I said before, Monday, October twenty-seventh, eleven A M. to one P M. at the College Union Bullet Hole. Georgetown Visits Gettysburg College Public Policy from eleven thirty A M. to one P M. in the College Union Building two oh eight. You have Sigma Noodles Tabling at the College Union Bullet Hole from eleven thirty to one thirty. And we've got some more things. Pickup Basketball, Monday, four P M. to six P M. at Plank Gym. Ultimate Frisbee, four thirty P M. to six P M. at the Tennis Court Field Two. We've got more events. There's an event called Hood Profits: Building Legacy. An inspiring conversation with Jocelyn Jackson Malloy, author of Hood Profits: Stories From Babylon, a street gospel of poetry, prophecy, and survival. She'll share her journey as a storyteller and entrepreneur, exploring how faith, creativity, and hustle can build legacy and spark change. That is Monday, October twenty-seventh, from five thirty P M. to six thirty P M. We have, gonna go through just a few more. Open Swim from seven P M. to nine P M. on Mondays. Fencing Meeting, seven P M. to nine P M. on Mondays in Plank Gym. Got Student Senate Weekly Meeting from seven P M. to ten P M. Open to everybody in College Union Building two sixty. James Bible Study, Monday, October twenty-seventh, six thirty P M. to eight thirty P M. You've got A.M. Open Swim on Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, seven A M. to nine A M. Faculty Coffee, the Dining Hall Grill, from eight A M. to ten A M. Open Swim on Tuesday, again, from ten A M. to one P M. We have some more events coming up. Physics Seminar by Emily Wilson, Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, one P M. to three P M. in Masters Hall, one ten Mara Auditorium. History Alumni Lecture, Stephen Petrus, from four P M. to five P M. in Brighton Ball Hall, two oh one Joseph Theater. Talk to you a little bit about that. So where have all the protest songs gone? "They're still with us, but political music isn't woven into the fabric of social movements today as it was during the civil rights struggles of the nineteen sixties. This talk examines the powerful relationship between music and politics during the Southern Freedom Movement with a focus on Bob Dylan's involvement. While later movements had hard-hitting songs, they never integrated collective singing in the grassroots level as civil rights activists did. Instead, protest music became tied to individual artists and bands, often missing the communal mass-singing spirit that defined the nineteen sixties." Stephen Petrus is a historian, author, and curator, Gettysburg College History major, graduated class of nineteen ninety-five, examines the intersections of music, culture, and politics. His works span twentieth-century American history with extensive writings and curated exhibitions on New York City folk music and the civil rights era. Join us as we explore the role of music in shaping social change and discover why Bob Dylan and the freedom songs of the nineteen sixties still matter today. Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, four to five P M. in Joseph Theater, Brighton Ball, two oh one, sponsored by the Frederick Duet Justin Class of Thirty-eight Alumni Lecture Fund in History. Where have all the protest songs gone? My name is Dan. Thank you so much for listening to the Gettysburg Update. Tune into the Tone Frequency tomorrow, I believe, at one P M. That's all from me. I'll see you next week.